Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Common Council meeting for Tuesday, April 14th. Roll call, please.
Fire? Fire?
Fire.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Jack Heck.
Here.
Bargander.
Here.
McSwain.
Here.
Whittle.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Burrow.
Here.
Butky.
Here.
And Henler.
Here.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, to which this is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item C, Public Comment. This time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. Upon recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council first stating their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Just so you're all aware, this is on about a 30-second tape of how it's going out. So we're going to have to give this at least a minute and a half for that signal to get out. And then if people choose to call in, the phone number was at the bottom of the page three of the agenda. So we just have to wait a little while to see if anybody calls in for the public comment period. That's right. Very interesting doing these meetings like this. Is that done? And is that sufficient or do we need a little longer? What's that? They're doing, okay. Nope, all right, we just got the signal, so we'll close the public comment. Portion and item D, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 19th, 2020 council meeting? There is a motion by Mr. Butky, a second by Mr. Henler. Any discussion? Mr. Whittle. You got your emoji up.
To make motion.
All right, all right, seeing no discussion, Deb, please do a roll call vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Hazel?
Yes.
Jack Heck?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
McSwain?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Burrow?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
And Henler.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item Stee, E, any staff updates?
Yeah, I actually have two, one of which is on the agenda tonight. And I put it on there based upon the staffing changes that took place two weeks ago. Temporary staffing changes in streets, parks, and wastewater. Later tonight, Rick Gramsa will be touching on police department staffing changes. But the reason I put this item on the agenda was specifically for the other ones. Two weeks ago, as I mentioned, I took action after consulting with Dan. And he was talking with others about some possible changes that would be beneficial to our streets, parks, and wastewater crews in terms of COVID-19 and trying to keep some separation. Trying to minimize the possibility that these work groups would be contaminating one another with their, you know, working close together in close quarters. The idea was to get them broken into work teams so that even if someone were to be coming down with COVID-19 symptoms, that the other group who had no interaction with that particular individual would be able to stay safe. Part of this deal was also to do regular sanitizing and cleaning of the facilities and vehicles and those kind of things to minimize the chance that anybody would come down with COVID-19. And I think it's worked very well. It was a four-week trial, we're halfway through it now, basically. It's, the trial period ends the end of next week. I'm really watching what's going on in terms of the governor and Wood County Marathon County emergency declaration, you know, discussions that they're having to see how far we need to carry this out. But I think it's done well for us so far. Chris Hawley, Sam Warp, and Justin Gasper, that are all on this call in case there's questions about how it's been working for their particular departments. But all the feedback I've gotten has been positive. And so again, we'd like to continue it until such time as we can discontinue it, hopefully soon, when we get to the end, if you will, of this virus. Any questions?
Any questions? I don't see any.
Okay, that being the case, I'd like to just add one more that was not on the agenda. Tonight is the last regular council meeting for Chris Jockic and Steve McSwain. And it's a weird night, normally tonight would be an evening when we'd be having cake and those kind of things, visiting with them before the meeting. And obviously, in the social distancing world, that's not happening. So, but I'd like to thank them both very much. You're both beginning a proclamation signed by the mayor, thanking you so much for your service to our community. I see some clapping going on. Thank you very much. We really appreciate your service. I don't think a lot of people realize how much work and time goes into being an elected official. And so we're grateful for your efforts here on the council and want to wish you all the best going forward. And do you have any words you want to say? And maybe you'll say them later, I don't know, but we thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item, Mayor comments. Just a couple, many of you have heard that there's a group of folks throughout the city that are meeting twice a week right now to stay way ahead of this virus that we're in. And I just want to name them because I think that's important. From the city, Steve Bark, Tom Lox, Communication Director, Police Chief Rick Gramsa, the Fire Chief Scott Owen, and Pete Fleddy, and Steve Bakos. Tom Whittle, the council president. Michelle Warrenke from UWSP, Ashley Winch from United Way. Andy Kavernan, representing the faith-based community, Scott Larson of Mackey, Kayla Gomez of Main Street. From Marshfield, the clinic health systems, Jay Schrader. Dr. Ryan Christensen, Mike Drevlo from the school district. John Neistrom from the YMCA, Sean Becker from the Wood County Sheriff. Alex Lenved from Midstate. Christie Rutter-Ag from the Wood County Health Department. Lori Wyland from Columbus, and Ryan Neville from the Medical Center. These folks have taken, put a lot of time into making sure that we're all in great communication with each other. We're very, very happy with this group. I also would like to give public acknowledgement to Deb Hall and her entire staff for the way they handled the ups and downs of this election. Forty-seven percent of the folks, registered folks cast ballots. Thirty-five hundred were absentee ballots, and that's an enormous amount of folks coming in. And seventeen hundred and seventy-three in person, and Deb just did an outstanding job. Steve already brought up the fact that Chris Jockic. That's kind of fun to watch on the. Steve already brought up the fact that Chris Jockic, this is technically his last meeting, and Steve McSwain, and we did want to wish them well. I really would like it if you came back to the next meeting so we can get that cake because Chris Jockic was also a former mayor, been an alderman for a long time. He was really instrumental with the pool and other things, as well as Mr. McSwain. So I hope you guys will consider coming back. And then the final thing is, just something a little fun. This Thursday at 7:00 PM on your local PBS station is around the corner with John McGivern. And they came back here several months ago. And the entire 30-minute show is going to be this Thursday, and it's so many different things taking place here in Marshfield. So I really encourage you to watch it again, it's going to be this Thursday, April 16th, at 7:00 PM on your local PBS station. That's it for me, any council comments? Mr. McSwain.
Yeah, since this is my last time, I'd like to kind of repeat something that I mentioned earlier about there being some kind of artistic or landscape recognition of the involved citizen. At City Hall, I still think that'd be a good idea. I would like to thank all the people that are involved in the government, the various committees and commissions. I served on three citizen committees, the Historical Preservation, Community Development, and the Library Committee. There are a lot of very intelligent committed people here, and so I'd like to thank them. I'd also like to thank all of you elected people. It's a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of responsibility. May you be blessed with wisdom and courage in all your decisions and have ample parking in the future. We'll also thank the constituents, very many pleasant interactions with them. Encourage them to continue to use the city resources, such as the website and the geo-reporting, and remind them that anything that was done for them was done for them by the city workers. You don't have to fight City Hall, you can, you can get good cooperation from them. They have to follow rules and laws and look at the big picture there to help you. And that lastly brings me to the city employees. Probably the best part of the job was interacting with them, meeting the heads of the departments right at the beginning. A lot of very intelligent and forward-thinking people. And all the other, all the other workers, especially people at City Hall. I want to kind of give it personally, appreciate the patience and the positiveness that they always treated me. So thank all those people.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Mr. Chris.
I, this is my last meeting, and I've been involved in the city for almost. My mic is on, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, all right. As has been stated, this is my last council meeting. I'll make it to the Public Works meeting next week, and I, and I will come back. If you make a chocolate cake, I'll definitely come back. Because I'd like to do that in person, express my feelings in, in person to the, to the council, to the staff. Everyone throughout all my experiences here, like I said, for almost 30 years. Starting with Main Street, I got, that's how I got involved, Historic Preservation Committee, then getting on the council, mayor for a couple of years anyway. And then coming back on the Plan Commission, and then here back on the council. But Marshfield is a wonderful place and has wonderful citizens. The staff here, the citizens are lucky to have the staff that we have. Everyone has been very helpful to me, teaching, learning, you know, expressing things. Teaching me how the city works throughout all these years. It's just been great, it's been a wonderful experience. I do not regret anything, any of the time I've been involved. So I'd just like to thank everyone, how they've been helpful to me, and everyone does a great job. So I guess that's about it.
All right, thank you. Item H, any reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Seeing none, we will go on then to item J, the first reading of ordinance number 1431, proposed changes to Chapter 16 of the Marshfield Municipal Code Plumbing, presented by Brian Dillinger, Inspector Two Plumbing, and Sam Warp, Wastewater Superintendent.
Can you all hear me?
Yep, yep.
I'm Brian, Plumbing Inspector. Just want to do a little introduction. Little background on the plumbing code. It was adopted back in 1982. There's only been a few minor changes since then. That's why you have to state plumbing code as on any update. But the state agency that oversees us, they have changed their names several times and along with chapter numbers. So an update was, was very well needed for our code. And we did a lot of referencing state code numbers. As well as changes in the city requirements. So we, we did include redline copies and a clean copy for your reference to look at of the updated code. So some of the things that we changed in the code mostly were grammar, formatting, adding the state plumbing code reference numbers, and long-term policies that we finally wrote into the code. So there's a few significant changes. Number one is 1624, the San Perry sewer laterals and the connection to Main. Where is the responsibility of the property going? In some cases, there are risers that come off the main, so the city may assume responsibility. Again, restating the policy. Number two was in Chapter 1624 also. Any newer reinforcement laterals that connect to the line, San Perry Sewer Main? Our engineering department came up with basically figures on how we're going to connect to them so that we have proper connection dealing with the main. Number three was 1626. We're, we're no longer going to have cast iron laterals for any new installation. They're going to be PVC. So that's like one of the, one of the bigger ones. Number four is 1627. This is probably the biggest change. Where contractors and utility, utilities within the city doing boring or drilling or whatever, that they're responsible if they hit a private sewer. And then from wherever the break is, from that point on, that's where we're going to replace it. So that's kind of in a nutshell. So we had it at the Board of Public Works, they reviewed it and recommended approval of our proposed changes to Chapter 16. So we would recommend to approve the ordinance, 1431, and all the changes to Chapter 16 of the plumbing code. I guess, is there any questions or does Sam can add anything?
Sam, you're shaking your head no, you have nothing to add?
Says no.
So this is a first reading unless someone would make a motion to suspend the rules. Otherwise, this is just a first reading. And Mr. Butky?
Yeah, this was brought up to Public Works, and it makes a lot of sense. So hopefully, when it comes time, people will go along with this.
Okay. Anything, anything further from the aldermen on this? Mr. Whittle.
In the agenda, it said that there was a desire for us to suspend the rules and approve this. Is there a reason this needs to be done more expeditiously than waiting? Is there a reason for the expeditious need?
One of, one of the reasons we would like to do that is because of the construction season coming up really fast. And the rule limits that just came up, so the streets are open. So like I said, number four was like the biggest change, dealing with utility contractors, like the gas company when they're boring. like the gas company when they're boring, these people who have sanitary laterals that are other than PVC. If they are damaged, then we can actually have them repair that lateral and replace it all the way back to the main. It's not the homeowner's responsibility because they didn't cause the damage.
I would move to suspend rules and vote on this then.
So there is a motion by Mr. Whittle to suspend and approve ordinance, and there's a second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please do a roll call vote on suspending the rules.
Fire?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Slane?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
So there's a, the rules have been suspended. So is there a motion to approve ordinance number 14?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Fire. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whittle. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Exlane?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Item K, request to approve resolution number 2020-12, authorizing the issuance and sale of a $19,745,000 electric system revenue refunding bond, series 2020A of the city of Marshfield, Wood, and Marathon Counties, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bond and other details regarding the bond, presented by Dave Ferris of Eelers.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. I'm not sure if the report that we prepared today got sent out or not, so I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so this is the sale day report that we have for you. Thank you for letting me present the results of the 2020A electric system revenue bonds. Last month, I presented some options as to the best method of to refund the 2010 electric utility revenue bonds. And on March 24th, we received one proposal from JP Morgan Chase Bank with a really attractive indicative rate. Since we were not able to consider this rate upon receiving it, and tonight was the first potential time for the city council to consider the proposal, the passage of time has caused the rate to be adjusted slightly from what the Chase was willing to provide originally. If you go to page two, you know, the rate really ended up being super good anyways. On page two, you'll see what we presented to you originally were these first four columns with the yellow above it. The Chase proposal was this one here, where they actually had a rate that they had given us previous to that meeting of a 1.86% rate. So that was, we calculated at that point, it was a $5,136,000 savings to the utility. With the rate that they provided today, their final rate, it was a 1.33% rate, and that ended up giving us a savings of $5,749,000. So you can see that we're saving anywhere between $550,000 to $600,000 a year. Those are really outstanding savings. And what we had done, just so you know what this column here is, this is what would have happened if we had used rates that were really good at the beginning of March. Rates have gone a little crazy lately, but at the beginning of March, it was probably the lowest they have ever been. And with those rates and waiting until the fall to do it as a current refund, we were able to beat that number. So Chase Bank gave you one heck of a rate. The net present value on it is at almost 21% of the refunded debt principal. And when we recommend to people whether they should refund debt or not, 3% is where we start looking at it. So you can see that you really had an outstanding bid from them and a terrific savings for the utility. As far as other documents within here that are important, here's the debt repayment schedule for the next 10 years. And then the next couple documents are ones that you're going to consider tonight. This is the rate lock letter for Chase. Their rate that they provided us today of the 1.33% is good for 24 hours. So if the city council is so inclined, we would have this document signed and emailed to them as quickly as possible to ensure that we get this rate. The other document that Chase provided today is their bid proposal. This is also the same document, has same terms in it, a little bit more wording on what's required as far as some of the things with the bond. And that needs to be also approved and emailed to them as far as that 24-hour rule. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take. Any questions at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Well, if we, in order to do it, we need to get to questions, we need to get to a motion to approve. So is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Mr. Jockett, second by Mr. Whittle. Discussion, Mr. Henler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question I have, first of all, I think that the utility commission is doing the best thing, given the times we live in. And but I do have a question. Okay, we do make a savings. I wonder how the utility is going to be, what they're going to do with that 500 million savings?
The 5.7 million is, Nick, are you there? Yeah, Nick.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, what, as you're familiar with like the wastewater plant, you guys are able to authorize rate changes on an annual basis. The utility and the electric and water rates have to go through the Public Service Commission. So when we go on for the next rate filing, which will likely happen in a year or two, can then be considered at that time the savings that we see.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, obviously, the rate is great. Nice job. My only question would be, are you surprised that there was only one bidder, or is it based on the fact that the issuance is so large?
Well, we actually sent out the proposal to both Chase Bank and to an underwriter named Northland Securities, and Northland Securities decided not to submit a proposal.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
They're the two entities that have been showing interest in these type of forward purchases like this. They're rare, so.
Thank you.
Deb, was that, Deb?
So was that motion to approve their rate lock letter agreement?
It was a, it was a motion to approve resolution number 2020-12.
Which is all part of that? Okay.
Yep. Any further discussion?
Deb, I wonder if maybe you could have that added to the approval, to say the rate lock letter and the bid proposal?
And the bid proposal?
Yeah.
Yep, I'll add that to the motion.
All right, seeing no further discussion, then please roll call vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Exlane?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Item L, request to approve resolution number 2020-06, supporting a transportation alternatives grant program, application for the Adler Road Trail Extension Project, presented by Dan Connect, Public Works Director.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In your packet is a memo that describes this grant application. Staff's been working on this for several months here to put this application package together. This is a grant program administered by the Department of Transportation, and it's for, uses federal funds for a variety of transportation projects that are outside of your traditional street and highway projects. Eligible types of projects are the safe routes to school programs, which we've been successful on the past, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and other types of multimodal transportation enhancements. And this program provides 80% federal funding with a 20% local match. Our recently completed Wildwood-McMillan Connector Trail is funded through a filler program, although that program has kind of morphed into something a little bit different now. The reason we're talking about it tonight is the application requires a resolution of support from the project sponsor, which is the city of Marshfield, and that is due at the end of this week, 17th. Resolution 2020-06, if approved tonight, would be your support of the project. So the scope of the work is to extend the existing trail from the Sycamore Avenue and Adler Road intersection, westerly along Adler Road. It's just short of 3,000 feet, and it would connect with the trail system in Weber Park. This is seen as one of our highest priorities to enhance our trail network and complete that gap. The trail is located primarily on the County Y Adler Road right-of-way. However, it is adjacent to other properties, and we think there'll be some easements and maybe some property acquisition necessary to accommodate grading and drainage needs. We won't know for sure until the project would get into the design phase. But we do include some cost estimate in the in the application for that possibility. So the grand total of the project is estimated at around $530,000. The design and construction components are about $455,000, and that 20% local share of that is $91,000. The easement, and if there would be any land acquisition, would be 100% local cost. We have a pretty generous estimate of that. Right now, it's at $75,000, only because we want to make sure we're conservative on that number. If we learned anything from our Wildwood-McMillan Connector Trail experience is that the costs sometimes surprise you on those things. We want to make sure we have enough in our in our project estimate. So the total cost to the city is estimated at about $166,000 for a $530,000 project. If successful, construction would be in 2024. We'd hope to start the design process in '22 or '23. We've already received support from the Wood County Highway Department. It's a letter, and I think I put it in your packet, and Marshall Area Friends of the Trail. We also held a public meeting with the adjacent property owners back in March. Alderman Bargender attended and was part of that trail meeting. The neighbors are, those who attended are very well in favor of the project. I did talk to a few other folks who were not able to attend and also had some support. We haven't heard from all the property owners, but we have heard from the majority of those who are in support of the trail. But tonight, I'm asking for your approval of Resolution 2020-06.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 2020-06, motion by Mr. Bargender, second by Mr. Fisher? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please roll call vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Exlane?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Item M, request to approve resolution number 2020-11, amending the city's 2020 fee schedule to include plumbing plan review permit fees, presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Typically, you know, we update the fee schedule towards the end of the year, and then it's effective the following year, and we like to keep that in place. And we're acting to amend the fee schedule right now because we have an opportunity to provide an additional service. Late last fall, we petitioned the state to allow the Development Services Department to review, to do plan review for plumbing projects. Up until that point, we were able to review plans that had up to 15 fixtures on them, and we could review those locally. With this additional delegation from the state, we're allowed to review plans that have 16 to 30 fixtures, plus additional items such as garage catchbasins and grease interceptors. This really allows us to save the contractors time and money. The fees that we're proposing are actually less than what the state charges for these types of reviews. And typically, the plan review is about a three-month wait. So if a contractor comes in and they have a medium-sized project that would fit into this category, they'd have to submit it to state, and they could wait up to three months for that plan review, which would delay projects. The city being having this delegation and being able to review these plans saves time and money for the developers. So what we're proposing, it's included in your packet. We have five different fees that would be included in this update to the fee schedule, which would include garage catchbasin, grease interceptor, interior drain waste vent and water distribution, exterior building sewer and water service, and then a combined fee for interior and exterior. So we're proposing to, asking you to approve Resolution 2020-11, which would amend the fee schedule, the 2020 fee schedule.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution number 2020-11? A motion by Mr. Peschels, there a second? A second by Mr. Henler. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Exlane?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Thank you. Item N, request to approve Resolution number 2020-13, suspending late fees on unpaid sanitary sewer accounts during the COVID-19 public health emergency, presented by Steve Barck, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, these are tough times, we know, for many of our residents. Some people have lost jobs, or had furloughs, or had some problems with the businesses they run. And so some people are in hard times. And there's only limited things we can do for our citizens. Last month, the Public Service Commission in Madison, they decided to direct municipalities, municipal-run utilities, to forego the late fees on unpaid electric and water utility bills as a way to try and at least show some support for people who might be struggling at this point. And we thought it'd be a good idea to extend that to sanitary sewer customers. There are communities in Wisconsin that are doing this as a show of good faith to support their residents who are having some tough times. So with that in mind, staff would recommend approval of Resolution number 2020-13 to suspend late fees on unpaid sanitary sewer accounts for the duration of the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution number 2020-13? Motion by Mrs. Sparrow, the second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Oops, sorry, sorry. Mr. Jockett?
Question, is that the city emergency or state emergency? How are we defining that?
Well, first of all, and I probably should have said this, the the end of this suspension of late fees will come at the direction of the council. You'll have to actually approve a resolution to reinstate those fees. So I'll be keeping you posted. My thought was tying to the state and what comes from Madison via the governor. We also get directed from Wood and Marathon County officials as well. So I guess it's a little bit vague to say when the COVID-19 public health emergency comes to an end. But we'll be monitoring this, and when it appears that authorities, public health authorities, are determining that we have reached the end of the emergency per se, we'll bring a resolution back to reinstate charging those late fees.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Buckey?
Yeah, I'm for this. This would be a question for Sam, probably. I'm not sure I would like to, I don't know if it includes the haulers. I don't want to get behind on that. Maybe you could update us on that, Sam, if you have concerns with that residential. I have no problem.
If you can hear me?
Yep.
We are not behind on any haulers right now. They've been upped the speed. We tend to stay after them so we don't get behind, because they get behind, pay a lot of money in a hurry.
Right. Yep, okay.
So, of course, it's late.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, so no further discussion, please roll call vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
Exlane?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Sparrow?
Yes.
Buckey?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you. Item O, request to award contract for the city's 2020 asphalt paving program, presented by Dan Connect, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet is the memo from myself about our bid award asphalt paving projects. This year, we opened bids on March 31st, and we were fortunate in our timing there as well, as the majority of our bid prices were less than last year's prices by around 2% or so. And we suspect we'll have some bid savings when it's all said and done here. So I'll touch on that before I close here on what we would do with those. touch on that before I close here on what we would do with those bid savings. But in my memo, I show how the budget breaks down. Of course, the majority of it is for our twenty twenty asphalt paving program, and that list of projects had been approved by the Board of Public Works in late fall of twenty nineteen. We also had some projects from two thousand and nineteen that we were not able to finish due to weather and a short construction season, so those were part of this year's package of asphalt paving. We have the Cleveland Street Reconstruction, which is a fairly large reconstruction project, which was bid through the city asphalt contract. We have a street opening for the housing incentive program that was part of that contract. We have some miscellaneous citywide patching and some work on cemetery and zoo roads. Grand total of the project as bid was one million, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And we have budget to cover those various projects through various city budgets. As I mentioned, we do expect some bid savings with the favorable bid results, and our target right now for those bid savings would be to do some work on McMillan Street from Hume Avenue or the end of the concrete pavement out to Galvin Avenue. This is just east of the Walmart area. That pavement is showing some pretty significant decline in the last year or so, and we've got some bad joints and so forth, so we'd like to put some money on that with the bid savings that we suspect we'll get here. Of course, we're just getting started with construction season yet, and so assuming there's no surprises or other things that come up, that's what we'd like to do with the bid savings. So tonight, I'm just asking for your approval of the asphalt paving contract with American Asphalt of Mozzanee. And we always put in our approval in an amount not to exceed budgeted funding. These are just based on estimated quantities, and when we get into actual project, the quantities are sometimes higher or lower, but the bottom line is we don't want to exceed our budgeted funding. So the motion is to approve the contract in an amount not to exceed budgeted funding.
So is there a motion to approve the asphalt paving contract? There was a motion by Mr. Butky, a second by Mr. Henler. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Cecil?
Yes.
Doc heck?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
McSwain?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Item P, request to establish an interest rate on installment payment plan for the city's twenty twenty special assessments presented by Ron Amon, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Annually, we take to the Finance Budget Personnel Committee an interest rate to be charged on special assessments. If you recall, special assessments can be paid immediately or spread over twenty annual payments, depending on the amount. I calculate a rate based on the annual borrowing costs, and we add two percent traditionally. I did a little more detailed calculation this year to weight it by year when I look back, but I came up with four point five three, recommending four point six percent interest on special assessment, unchanged from last year, and open to any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the interest rate as proposed? Motion by Mr. McSwain, second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please roll call vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Cecil?
Yes.
Doc heck?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
McSwain?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item Q, request to approve a temporary memorandum of understanding with the Marshfield Police Union Bargaining Unit, allowing staffing scheduled changes during the COVID-19 subject to legal and administrative review and police union acceptance, presented by Rick Ramsup, Police Chief.
Yes, thank you. What you have in front of you is a letter of understanding that was prepared by our labor attorneys and also reviewed by Attorney Wolfram. It was brought to my attention. What we had done is we had started this schedule last Friday off of a sense of urgency from staff that we get going on. This adjusted schedule, what it does is it actually takes what was normally four workships and breaks it down into six with fewer staff on each shift, allows for, you know, equitable amount of time off, the limited exposure, similar to how some of those other groups did and departments did within the city. There's many other law enforcement agencies that are doing similar schedules, such as to limit staff exposure should there be a COVID outbreak in our community. But we did start this on Friday off of urging from staff. I guess MOU or letter of understanding is supported by administration, supported by union, and like I said, it has been reviewed by Fire Legal, both locally and in Madison, with some changes that have been put in here. Ultimately, it doesn't change the twelve-hour shift, it just puts officers on a six-days working, twelve-days-off rotation. It actually allows them to work fewer hours in a pay period with more time off, but if they are, and there's some days where they'll be on-call, and should they be needed for those on-call days and they haven't reached their total amount for that pay period of eighty-four hours, not all of the time is then overtime, some of it is straight time, should they be called in on their on-call days or even on their off days. But ultimately, everything that would be changed from the contract to what is in this letter is listed here. We have to answer any questions. The length of the contract is ultimately in the hands of both the city and the union, but would be dependent on the state of Wisconsin, Wood County, and Marathon County cancellations of their declarations of emergency. But like I said, with that urging from staff and with the need to get going on this, I mean, we did start the actual work schedule portion of it. We're just waiting on your formal approval of this MOU that would adjust other things within the contract.
Steve?
Yeah, if I could just add one thing to what Rick said. He mentioned the MOU. There was one that I put in the agenda packet that went out when I added this item, but the one that he's referring to with some changes from legal was distributed by me around four o'clock this afternoon. So that would be a separate email that I hope you've had a chance to see. I apologize that it's so late in the day-to-day, but there were changes being made right through the day-to-day to try and resolve some issues. So the version that we're talking about that is being embraced by Labor Law Council, Administration, and the Police Chief is the one sent out about two hours ago.
So are you asking us to approve something that has already been, that has already started?
Is that from you or for Steve?
For either of you.
Well, the schedule itself has started. This MOU, which is actually breaking down some of the, I guess, benefits or benefits that are extended within the contract, is what we're looking for, I guess, formal approval on. I guess ultimately, the schedule's starting, I guess. If this wasn't supported, we would just go back to our existing schedule that we were on prior to this past Friday. But like I said, based on the sense of urgency from both staff and administration and not wanting to be behind the eight ball should the surge is a concern in the area, going to, you know, be here and when, it was started. So I guess I don't know how to answer that. The schedule was started. We can always go back to the pre-existing schedule, but the letter of understanding in its entirety is what we're looking to be supported and to be voted on.
Okay, so then, Steve, I have a few questions for you and for you and Rick, because this has been being worked on now for some time, since April first, is probably even before that. But I mean, that's where I went to the PFC and just make sure that they're on board with it. But then, after they give their blessing, it kind of turns into a city issue, doesn't it? City administration.
Yeah, I'll take that, Mayor. Yeah, Rick did send out an email to PFC members on April first indicating his intent to do this. At that time, he referenced authority that he had under the Police Collective Bargaining Unit. In talking, you know, checking this out last week when he presented a memorandum of understanding for consideration to have the council formalize this as a temporary addition or change, if you will, to the contractual agreement we have with the police union. Some discussions resulted from that, and ultimately, I did turn to the city attorney, and his opinion is that, in fact, this requires, the change requires council approval for the adjustments of schedule that he's done. He has taken the action effective Friday to modify those schedules, but it takes council approval to actually give the final stamp of approval, if you will, and that is in the form of the memorandum of understanding that you have before you tonight.
Was there any discussion with you on this implementing something? Because, and I'll ask this for the city attorney a little bit, we've implemented something that could have ramifications, so we'll have to come around to that. Steve, I might understand that you gave your blessing on this to go ahead and start this new policy.
No, I did tell Rick on, Mayor, I did tell Rick on Thursday that I could not sign it. I looked into whether or not I could do so under, if I wanted to, actually, under the proclamation you signed on March seventeenth that the council ratified by resolution on March nineteenth. I talked to the city attorney. He felt that maybe, you know, by the letter of the law, I probably could, because I've been given some authority under those approvals by you and the council, but the spirit of it, with the council meeting coming up in just a few days, I probably should not, I should bring it to the council for their review and approval. And so I advised the police chief of that, and he felt it was in his best interest, and I think he was still pointing to, at that point, Article three of the contract with the police union, with the understanding that that did give him the authority to make the schedule changes. And today, the city attorney did provide a memo that suggested otherwise, so that's kind of how we got to this point.
Okay, so can you answer the question then? Did you say to go ahead and implement it or not to? Because what I'm looking for is the answer to that question.
I told Rick late afternoon on Thursday of last week that I would not sign the memorandum of understanding. Again, the discussion we had was whether or not I would do that.
Okay, that's good, I get it. So why wasn't it implemented?
It was implemented because I thought it was in the best interest of the safety of the community, and the union supported it, and the union ultimately said that if there was changes that needed to happen or occur by council through the MOU, that they would be supportive of those changes. But they also felt that this was necessary to implement as soon as possible, and many staff felt that we were actually late for the game in implementing this.
So, and I do understand that, but when it goes over to the city, there's a certain issue there, because, you know, we're in a state of an emergency, but are we in an emergency? I think that's...
I think that's on our meetings, I think that we would be in a state of emergency, and...
We are in a state of emergency, but there's a difference between being in a state of an emergency and emergency. An emergency would be if, God forbid, a train derailed and there was things everywhere. When you're told, or when you have a discussion with the city administrator and the city administrator says not to do it, and then it's implemented, there could be issues with that, so...
Oh, yeah, it's a bit, the city administrator never said to implement the schedule. The city administrator said that he would not be signing the MOU prior to the city council meeting. So at that point, I went back to staff and I said, and union, I said, do we want to implement this, or do we want to wait until Tuesday? And the union said, I think we need to implement this now. We will work cooperatively with the city to do whatever is in the city's best interest, but I think right now, and this is coming from staff, that we need to implement this sooner than later, and we feel that sooner should have already happened.
And that's well understood, but the issue is, is the authority does not lie there with city staff to implement something that does not have, because the MOU, if you look at the MOU from the way it originally was on Friday to the where the attorneys had to go in and redo it, was substantial. So, Hap, I guess I have a question for you, and then I see Mr. Fisher, I'll go to you. Is it, if now that this has been implemented, is there any issues there, or is this new thing going? It should be pretty simple.
Well, I'm gonna say it like this, and I did give an opinion. My opinion is that as far as an MOU that would have the effect of altering the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, it's really ineffective without the council signing off. So I think without that action, the MOU probably doesn't have a function. What I'm hearing Rick say is that he, you know, was trying to change the schedule, but understood maybe that wouldn't be effective without the council's approval. I certainly would say that from a change of the contract, that's correct. So, you know, the legal effect of it, at least from what I'm seeing here, is that without the council's approval, this really isn't in effect.
Okay. Mr. Fisher?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any further discussion?
Who was the second?
Mrs. Spirros. Mrs. Spirros.
Spirros?
Yep. Any further discussion? Nope, all right, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Cecil?
Yes.
Doc heck?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
McSwain?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
Henler?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Item R, request to increase employment status of Administrative Associate Two, the Wastewater, from point six FTE to point six-two-five FTE, presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, this may sound like a small thing. It's one of those deals you look at fractions of an FTE and say, what happened? But about a year ago, the position of an Administrative Associate Two in the Wastewater Division, the FTE full-time equivalent was increased from point five to point six. That translates to twenty-four hours a week. I believe that the head of that division was thinking perhaps that that might be five hours a day. It's actually just a little bit less than that. So at this point, for scheduling purposes, Sam, as the head of Wastewater would like it to be, that individual works five hours a day, Monday through Friday. That technically is a point six-two-five FTE position at that point, so we would need the approval of the council to increase the individual to that status. So that's recommendation is approval from point six to point six-two-five FTE for the Administrative Associate Two in Wastewater.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the change in employment status? Motion by Mr. Butky, a second by Mr. Peschel. Any discussion? So, Mr., okay.
What are we talking about regarding the actual cost?
I don't have that handy, and I haven't really talked to Jen and/or Ron about that. You know, you're talking about one hour a week of wages that individual, I think, probably makes somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty dollars an hour, and then you have benefits added. You know, we didn't see it as a real significant cost factor over time, but I know everything adds up. I apologize, we didn't calculate it for this one, maybe because of the small increase in FTE status.
So this position was already eligible for benefits?
To some degree, prorated benefits, so maybe if I get caught up, Jen will ask you to fill in for me, but this position has been grandfathered, this individual's been grandfathered for health insurance purposes. We now require people to be at point seven-five FTE status to have health insurance, and this individual is also eligible for and receives prorated vacation, sick leave, and benefits of that nature.
So the amount of benefit will also slightly increase along with the wage?
Yes, yeah. Very fractionally, it will go up, yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Cecil?
Yes.
Doc heck?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
McSwain?
Yes.
Whistle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
And Henler?
Yes.
Now motion carries. Thank you. Item S, request to approve plans for resuming council and committee meetings, presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, our last regular council meeting on March 19th, the council acted on my recommendation to cancel all meetings through Friday, April 10th. All city meetings, whether they be council or committee meetings. And we have now restarted them with this meeting, and I believe that the utilities commission met yesterday. So the questions for you are two. Number one, do you feel comfortable at this point resuming regular council and committee meetings of the city of Marshfield? And number two, if the answer to number one is yes, how do you want to proceed? I think that this meeting is going very well. I'm very impressed with how we're able to function tonight remotely via Zoom and conference call. You could say that that's how you want to continue with the future meetings, or you could certainly look at changing to this conference call only, or trying an arrangement whereby we could meet in some room in person with adequate social distancing. It may be possible for the smaller committees to do that more than the larger ones. If you look at the number of people on the screen right now, we're looking at about 25 individuals, making it very difficult to do, although if we went to a place like the Second Street Community Center, a venue of that nature, the larger Adrendal Room, perhaps it is possible. So I look to your direction tonight, counsel, for two things. Number one, are we in fact ready to resume all regular council and committee meetings, in your opinion? And number two, how would you like to conduct them?
Questions from the council. Mr. Bargender, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Okay, please.
Um, our last public works meeting, we met, we did social distancing in the council chambers. It seemed to work out really well. I, I would be in favor of that type of format again. As far as the council meetings go, if you wanted to go to a bigger venue like the library, like Steve suggests, I think that might be a good thing too. Although these meetings, this meeting is going rather well. I guess it depends on the atmosphere of the community. I mean, if we're, if we're coming down with any type of cases here in the next week in Marshfield or the surrounding area, we might want to reconsider that and just go to the virtual meetings. But at this point, I would be in favor of doing social distancing in person. Thank you.
Mr. Buttke?
And I would agree with Ken on that.
Mr. Whittle?
I, I guess I would, I would ask staff, is staff comfortable with what Ken suggested?
Anyone from staff?
I'll jump back in, and then certainly we have Ron, Dan, Jen, and others who may want to comment. My thought would be for the committee meetings, and I'm thinking specifically at this point of judiciary and license, finance, budget, personnel, board of public works. Given the, the smaller size of those boards, I think we could very definitely meet in the council chambers and honor the social distancing expectations. For the council, I think if we're going to do that, I know we did it once where we had a couple of council members sitting in front of everyone else on the floor, but we had two people missing that night too. So if we're going to try it at the council level, I think maybe we want to look at a larger, like the Adrendal Room or something else, or continue to do them remotely. But again, that's your call.
I would agree with that, Steve.
Mrs. Spiros?
Yeah. My personal opinion is that we have to follow recommendations of science. So if they're still recommending that these type of meetings be held virtually, I feel like we need to follow the recommendations of the people who know it best.
Mr. Fire?
And we're also telling citizens to, to stay home and, and stay close to, to everything. I think we should follow the same example as, as a big group.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Uh, thank you. I have a question for Steve. Is it not correct that government is exempt under the governor's orders and that we aren't able to meet as long as we are doing proper social distancing?
Yeah, Adam, my, my understanding is you're absolutely correct with that. I think the, the comment being made by a couple of your peers is along the lines of maybe we need to set an example for the public if we're telling them that they shouldn't be. But we are, according to the governor's order, my understanding is, as a government entity, we are exempt from that, that requirement.
There is another thing. Today, the state did make some of their representatives, some of them were in, in session and others were virtual. So that could be a possibility as well. Who else had their hand up? Uh, Dan?
Thank you. I think Alderman Bargender made a good point is that if things would continue as they are today, I think we're probably all comfortable with, with the meeting. But we're also hearing about a surge that's coming sooner or later, and if that starts to happen, then I think a remote meeting makes more sense. So it's probably kind of a wait and see what, what really happens.
Yep. True.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious about, you know, public comment periods and if you get a large influx of individuals, are you going to keep those public comment periods virtual? Because we might not have total control over the social distancing if 10 to 15 people come into the room and need to express something.
Well, the, the public piece of that is kind of challenging. I, I talked to the city attorney earlier today about a question raised by a couple of our staff members regarding public hearings that some of our meetings call for, whether it be, you know, the plan commission or at the council level with maybe special assessments and those kinds of things. So we, we still do need to work out some of the public things. Tonight, we made it possible for them to call and be heard. We didn't have any members of the public participate that way today, but, but we may have others. And certainly if we open the doors, we run the risk of having, as you said, numbers of people coming in to express concern with any item.
Uh, Hap?
Yeah, just, and I did talk to Steve a little bit about that issue. It's one thing where there's a hearing because, you know, obviously there is a right to, to address the body that any hearing would be in, and we'd have to deal with that. I do think that there is a way to deal with it remotely, but we'd have to, you know, you'd have to work out some of that. But as far as general council meetings, there's not a requirement by statute or otherwise that we have to allow somebody to comment in, in the public. So, you know, if we're, you know, during this time period, we certainly can, you know, scrap that for a period of time, or, and I had talked a little bit to staff about this, another option would be if, if they wanted to do it, arrangements be made, either that they send in written comments or that they make an arrangement to call in at some point and be joined that way for the purpose of giving the public comment. So for a regular council meeting, I'm not worried about that.
Uh, Nick?
Um, I guess my opinion is that for small meetings, like the judiciary and license, finance, budget, personnel, that I'm comfortable with meeting in a small group, maintaining our distances. But I, I agree that in a, a group of this size that we have tonight, that I think this format works well for that.
Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. I think I've been pretty clear in the past that I really feel that people that are in a governing body should be meeting in person. I understand the situation we're in tonight. I understand the need to do this remote. I definitely think smaller committees, as has been mentioned, finance, budget, personnel, judiciary licensing, board of public works could easily meet in these council chambers, provide social distancing, meet as a in-person governing body. I also don't really see why the council as a governing body could also not meet in person. I think we could do social distancing. I know that there's a concern that by the time you pack in all the people that are on a screen right now, it's going to fill the, the room. But I don't see why we couldn't have the governing body themselves be in person practicing social distancing and have staff calling in remotely, providing their feed as we are right now. I think that that makes more sense because then there's a lot lost, a lot of body language that's lost as you're looking across the room at, at fellow council members. And I think that a lot of that is lost. I'll go with the majority, but I really don't see why we couldn't do in person with social distancing.
Nick, did you have? Yeah, please, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just from the utility perspective, I've gone to great lengths to keep my staff separated into two separate groups. And I would encourage this body, if they do make a motion, that they allow flexibility. You know, at this point, we're not willing to open up the utility building to customers just in the fact that we don't know where everyone's traveled. And we also don't know our commissioners, they're traveling, and who they may be, come in contact with. And I'd rather at this point have the flexibility to maintain a teleconference or a Zoom meeting as this is.
All right. Any, any, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo some of the comments made by Alderman Whittle. I, I would agree. I think having a governing body be able to meet in person, I think is important. I think if people feel uncomfortable, I don't know why we can't have this forum available as well, but I see people already in the council chambers, actually three, if you see, Mr. Mayor. So I don't know why you can't maybe have specifically for the council meetings, both at, for both avenues of having people be able to be in person and also having people meet remotely. Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
One additional comment I'd like to make, and that would be regarding closed session items. I realize that this particular meeting, any items that have been closed session have been removed from closed session, therefore we don't have a closed session. But I have grave concerns of using this particular technology with the, the past history of people hacking into this particular platform. I don't want to see that happening. I think closed sessions need to be confidential, and I don't think having it through a venue like this works that way. So I had, I actually expressed grave concern to Mr. Bard. When we first talked about the potential of this remote meeting, I, I said I really would not like to see any closed session items because I'm concerned of hackers, I'm concerned of information leaking out. So that would be another thing to think about if we're not meeting as a body in person. I don't know that closed session items should be addressed.
Yeah, I, I think Tom makes a really good point, and we've talked about this a little bit via email leading up to this meeting. The, the idea is that we would not conduct a closed session by Zoom. I think maybe some of you actually heard that there have been some, some concerns that have popped up from here, you know, different places with Zoom. And certainly, we don't want people from the public able to access our closed session. The intent, if we tried to do closed session remotely, would be that we close the Zoom portion of the meeting, have council members call back in on another line and, and lock it in as a separate conference call, voice only, which is maybe a little bit more challenging than seeing your faces. Certainly facial expressions and, and those kinds of things are helpful in terms of getting closed session items resolved as much as they are open session items. But if we do it remotely, it will be a conference call where there's a separate login, if you will, to try and minimize the chance that there's any outside influence on the, on the call.
I'm not sure if anyone else had their hand up. One thing to be aware of is next Tuesday is the new organizational meeting, plus a plan commission, plus finance probably, and judiciary. So you're going to have, we do need to think about this rather quickly to, in regard to next Tuesday, because there are potentially four meetings which could be used, handled in different ways. We talked about having public works and finance in, in the council chambers with appropriate distancing, and I'm comfortable with, I would be comfortable with that. But council and, I don't know if there are any public hearings for the plan commission, but we need to be thinking about that.
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, a couple of things about that night. We have filled that up in the past with four meetings, as you said. Judiciary licensing at five, finance, budget, personnel, 5:30, council organization at six or 6:15, and then plan commission at seven. Plan commission is not meeting next week. They, there's uncertainty, you know, they have to be able to plan ahead with public hearings and those kinds of things, and, and they are not going to be meeting next Tuesday. And finance, budget, personnel, I'm not sure. I'll have to work with Ron and Jen. You probably noticed tonight, I put a couple of smaller items that would normally have gone to that committee on the council agenda. The interest rates on special assessments and the employment status of that one person in wastewater, not knowing what the council's directive would be tonight in terms of future public meetings. So we may not have as much on the docket that night, Chris, as, as you said, but it's still only a week away and we have to be ready for that. I've talked to Dan, he's definitely committed to having a board of public works meeting next Monday. So there will be a meeting on Monday and at least one meeting on Tuesday. We have to have some direction tonight.
Mrs. Spiros?
Yeah, I think at this point, because we don't know what the, when, when the actual peak is going to hit, you know, the science is still changing every day. I think on a rather safe side, we would go ahead and approve that we can continue to have these meetings virtually. And at some point, if we change that because it looks like we're in the clear, then that, you know, that, that would be okay. But if, if, if we go ahead and approve the virtual meetings, at least we have that in our back pocket if that's what we need to use.
Please, Steve?
Thanks, Bob. Maybe I could make a suggestion. We got a lot of comments and they're all, all good discussion. Maybe we take them as separate items and even take a vote on it. You know, the first one being for the council meetings, because those are the larger meetings, if we want to continue those remotely or try them somehow in person. And then have for the committee meetings, which are smaller groups, and see what the, the body wants to do there. Perhaps it'll be the same way for both, but there's been enough comments that some people feel that the smaller committees could be treated differently than the full council. Maybe make two different motions and votes out of them.
All right. So is there a motion from the council? Mr. Whittle?
I would move to resume meetings. I would further add to that, that small committee meetings be provided in person and large committee meetings or meetings such as the utility commission be provided with an option of virtual maintaining active evaluation of, of current situation to be moved to in person as soon as is possible considering the current climate of health.
So the motion is in essence to have smaller meetings in person and a larger council meeting with the option of virtual. So those that want to come can, but they'd have to social distance appropriately and, and the one, those folks that choose to be virtual, be virtual. That's the motion. Is there a second? A second by Mr. Fisher? Any discussion?
Question?
Please, Mr. Dockak?
Are we talking just council meetings and board of public works meetings, or are we talking all other committee meetings?
I was saying that all meetings should resume, but I was specifically addressing the in-person versus virtual on a council level, leaving the option for like utility commission and those types of committees to decide if they want to be remote or if they want to be in person.
But what about like his library?
Board, historic preservation, if they want to meet remotely, fine. But I think as a governing bodies of elected officials, we should probably try to meet in smaller committees in person if possible.
Have any other committees met at all?
Utility commission met yesterday, virtually. The school board met last week in person.
Have our other committees meet virtually or do they need to? Has there been an expression of?
Nothing I'm aware of. Steve, are you aware of any meetings?
No, I'm not aware of anything. In fact, you know, for three weeks, the, the committee meetings were all canceled. I think one of the things that might come out of this during COVID-19 is that, you know, committees may be even more scrutinizing than normal about whether they need to meet. Typically, many of our committees meet every month, even if they maybe have, you know, just a couple of items to talk about that are just recurring. So certainly, they can look at maybe canceling those meetings if they're not necessary. But there have not been, to answer your question, Chris, there have not been committee, board or commission meetings really happening in the past almost month now.
Mr. Buttke?
This is a question for Deb. If we go to virtual council meeting next week, if it's required, Deb, how would you administer the oath of office?
Well, I probably, it depends if the new members would have access to it, which I'm sure they would. I could give them the oath of office, just like we're doing now. But then I would probably schedule an appointment and do it in person as well and have them sign their form.
Okay, so it can work for you.
All right. So anything further? Any further discussion on the motion? Josh?
Yeah, I guess as long as the virtual option is still in play, I think we, we would have a challenge, maybe having an EDB meeting with, with the folks that are on that committee. We often don't have a full, it's tough to get a quorum with, with people to attend the meeting. Plus, we have some people that I think are in the immunocompromised status that would be reluctant. be reluctant to attend a meeting. So as long as that was an option, I think that would probably still work for us.
Okay. Jen.
Just one more thing to add, in the event that you have someone who is symptomatic or has a family member that is symptomatic, you might just want to make sure that you have that alternative option for anyone, either on the council or an employee, for that matter, to have, like Josh had mentioned, an ulterior mode or option to log in and participate.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, please, roll call vote.
Fire?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
McLean?
I'm abstaining.
You abstaining? Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ferrell?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
And Hanler?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries nine to zero with one abstention. Item T, review emergency authorization provided under Resolution number 2020-09, presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned earlier in this meeting, back on March seventeenth, you signed an emergency proclamation, and two days later, the council ratified that by resolution, granting certain authorities to city officials, me in particular, actually, to be able to take care of some things here with city staff that needed to get done, some possible things that might need to be purchased, security, secured, services, goods, whatever, during the emergency, making sure that we can continue to pay vendors and do payroll, all those types of things in the absence of regular meetings, which we have not had a meeting until tonight for, you know, nearly four weeks. That was the premise of it, to make sure the government could continue and that any emergency equipment or supplies could be secured and that we could continue forward during this tough time. The date set as the end date was May first. If you remember that night, there was a lot of discussion about whether that could potentially be lengthened to maybe as far out as August first, to make sure that that emergency authorization was in place, should COVID-19 go longer. So I just bring this to you tonight for review. You've got two sides to it. On one side, we now have regular meetings. We're talking about getting together at Board of Public Works, Finance Budget Personnel, council level, to do the business of the city, to approve bills, to be able to get approval from elected officials on some needed expenditures and actions, which kind of makes some of the emergency authorization less necessary. On the other hand, as long as COVID-19 is out there, there is a possibility that, you know, tomorrow morning, we wake up and there is something significant happening, and it's good to have somebody authorized to be able to take actions on behalf of the city to address it without waiting thirteen days for another council meeting. So, you know, right now, as I said, it runs out May first, but because we're having regular public meetings now, it's a little bit less of a critical issue. I leave it to you whether you want to just let it stay at that right now, extend it beyond May first, or something else. I don't see a big need right now to extend it. Two weeks from now, we'll be talking about, again, what the status is of the coronavirus and where we stand as a state and as a community. At that time, if necessary, we could put it on the agenda to extend the emergency resolution through, you know, through May fifteenth or June first, or if you feel that's appropriate now, you could do it at this time. I put it to your discretion at this point.
Mr. Whittle.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it's actually now null and void since we've met as a body. The second to last paragraph says, "Or such other date and time as the common council may hereafter determine." Oh, wait a minute. I thought there was something about when we met. Wasn't there a clause in there about when we met as a council? No. I thought that was in there. I would have no problem going month by month. If you think this is good enough to get us through the end to May, and then we reevaluate the last meeting in April, and maybe extend it by a month, I would have no problem with that. I heard us warn it was done when we met, but I guess I must have misread something.
Mr. McLean.
Yeah, it says in the middle of that resolution, until the common council could meet, is in that, it's right in the middle of the resolution.
Yep, yep, there it is. Thank you.
Okay.
Please, Steve.
Yeah, I apologize. I thought that the intent was May first and that, you know, we would look at when we had regular meetings, but we are going to have regular meetings now. So, you know, I, if you want to let it expire tonight, that's fine. I mean, I certainly can contact the mayor and council president if something comes up, and if something emergency is necessary, and you can call the body together. There may be value in continuing that until the, at least the governor releases Executive Order twelve, or the counties have sort of pulled back on their emergency resolutions. But you're right. My biggest concern in setting this up was that we could do business if, in fact, something came up and we didn't have a council meeting in sight. So if that's a purview of the body, that's fine.
Mr. Whittle.
I would move to leave it in place. The idea that it's a regular, second regular council meeting, not the organizational meeting, but the second regular council meeting of April, so two weeks from today, that we would reevaluate with the idea of potentially extending by a month if we needed to. Just another clarification at the very bottom of the proclamation, this I think is at the last page, proclamation will take effect immediately and shall remain in effect until May first, 2020, at 11:59 PM, or such earlier time as a quorum of the common council convenes. So I would move that we continue this on until May first, even though we have convened, and then reevaluate whether it's a necessity coming up at that second regular council meeting. We don't know what's going to happen. We hope for the best. We, you know, plan for the worst, hope for the best, and if something does go south really fast, I think we need availability if necessary.
So the motion is to continue through the next council meeting, till May first. Is there a second? Mr. Jockick has a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Fire?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bargander?
Yes.
McLean?
Yes.
Whittle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Ferrell?
Yes.
Butky?
Yes.
And Hanler?
Yes.
That motion carries, there is no item U and V, as there was no closed session, closed session. Item W, any suggested items for future agendas? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whittle, a second by Mr. Bargender. We are adjourned.